Okay, welcome to tonight. We have a city commission meeting for August fifteenth. We have a quorum. We'll call the meeting to order. First thing on our agenda is invocation. Pastor Corey Landreth from Real Life Church, would you lead us in prayer?
Thanks, everybody. Always good to be here. Corey Landreth, 804 South Denver. I don't know if they'll say that, but now you know. Good to be here. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, I ask you tonight to be with the men and women of our city commission, that they champion the cause of those who are outcasts, that they seek the benefit and the best for all our citizens, that your word would be a light to their feet and would illuminate their path. I pray for the wisdom to discern right from wrong and the courage to do the right. And I pray for direction and discipline as we face the days ahead. God, I pray especially for your blessing, not only on these men and women, but on our entire town, our state, our nation, God, as we continue to walk this path and face the days ahead. Would you bless us with every spiritual blessing? Would you give us wisdom and understanding and discernment in all things? And would you bless us tonight in Jesus' name? Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next, we have pledge allegiance. Would you join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Right. Next on our agenda is public appearances, which we have three tonight. First, I have Kevin Wishart for Parks and Rec to do an annual update.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Thanks for having me here this evening to give our annual update. Lots of things happening in our department, as you're aware, with our master plan really starting to take steps forward. We have a big meeting coming up this week that we're looking forward to. Thought I'd start tonight by just refreshing your memory that Parks and Rec encompasses parks, recreation, cemetery, forestry, and the senior center to a certain degree today. So, we're doing that with ten and a half full-time staff members, myself being one. We have three and a half in recreation, two in parks, two in our cemetery department, one in forestry, and our senior center director. A lot of people do a lot of work to pull off programs in our department and to maintain our grounds. This year, from January first through August the tenth, I think, when I did my last inventory, we've done it with one hundred and twenty-nine part-time employees that have worked at some point for us this calendar year. Of those, forty-one are game officials. We have twenty-three pool staff, which is lifeguards and management staff at the pool, twenty-two concession workers. We have fourteen workers who might do more than one thing for us. They might umpire, they might work at a concession stand, work at the activity center, or be on the grounds crew. We have ten part-time seasonal parks workers, five in cemetery, the rec ballfield crew, rec maintenance, four, activity center attendants, three. We have a couple of part-time forestry people. And we had a paint crew this year that did lots of painting in parks and recreation facilities. We had two of those, but we also, a couple of those fall in that dual-position category. They did some other things for us. So, some of the highlights, as you can see in the bottom-left corner of your screen, is our new park equipment at Rice Park. It's been very popular. If you've driven by there, you've seen lots of activity there. Our park rental reservations, that's something that we do year-round, and we offer these facilities for rental for weddings, class reunions, birthday parties, et cetera. We've done thirty-four of those so far at East Park, the large pavilion at North Main, thirty-nine, the small gazebo on the east side of North Main Park, twenty-six, the shelter at Forest Park, twenty, and Gordy Park, nine. Our other park shelters are first come, first served, so anyone that gets there and wants to utilize one of those can do so. If you call and reserve this and pay a small fee, this guarantees your placement at this particular shelter. Our staff goes out and makes sure the trash is dumped, the shelter's clean, and ready to go before that reservation. This is a picture of the brand-new surface at Summit Park. Thank goodness. It's been a long time coming. It's been well-received, and it's just as good as I'd hoped. And so, hopefully for the next ten to twelve years, we're in great shape at Summit Park. Recreation, we do a little bit of everything. You can see these photos, pictures of our instructional basketball, looks like about a twelve-year-old, yeah, about a twelve-year-old baseball game, some soccer, our Little Tykes T-ball group this year down the left corner, and a machine-pitch softball game in the lower right. So, so far, in 2016, our spring volleyball season was a little lower, at seventy-eight participants. We really go great guns in volleyball in the fall. We're taking those registrations now, so that number looks a lot larger at the end of the year, once we get through the fall season. Our spring soccer was up. We had two-hundred-and-fifty-one participants in the spring. Fall is typically a little larger. We'll see what happens this year. As you know, we've started the partnership with the YMCA for soccer this fall. Those registrations began in earnest today, so I don't really know where we are registration-wise, but we're looking forward to that partnership. Our hikes baseball and softball program continues to grow. We had two-hundred-and-thirty-three boys and girls participating in that this summer. And our rec league, which encompasses T-ball, machine pitch, and the non-hikes league teams and participants, we had four-hundred-and-seventeen participate this year. And then, this year was our first year with Walnut Valley League basketball. We had two-hundred-and-eleven participants in that, and for the most part, it went as expected. So, we've had some changes, tried some new things, and will continue to do so as we move forward. We don't forget about our adults. We continue to offer volleyball, basketball, and softball, and flag football for our adults. Eleven teams in spring volleyball for adults. Fall registration's happening now. Our winter basketball, we had eight, which is fairly typical. And in softball, this summer, we had thirteen teams that coed and church league coed. No men's softball this summer, which has been the trend over the past few years, to not have men's in the summer, but we usually have a few teams in the fall. We've done several special events. We try to get at least one in a quarter. We did our diva night in February, where we had students from the Paul Mitchell School in Wichita come in and do hair and nails for young participants in that. That's a very popular event. We do that civic center, try to make a night of it. We try to do that every other year, and it went very well. We did a mother-son bowling event this year. USD four ninety has a father-daughter date night, so we decided we would do a mother-son event, and so we chose bowling. It went very well. Our kite day, we try to do during the spring soccer season, provide kites to kids and cook some hot dogs. We try to get a nice weather day to get out and fly some kites after soccer. As I recall, we had to postpone kite day this year by a week because we had inclement weather when it was originally scheduled, so... We offered a pitch-hit-and-run, which is the baseball equivalent of pump-pass-and-kick. We did that at McDonald's Stadium in the spring. Had kind of a cool, cloudy day to do that, but lots of participation. And one of our winners advanced quite a way up the ladder. I can't remember where he placed in his age group, but really did very well. So... And then, of course, our Fourth of July celebration that we do every Fourth of July. East Park's proven to be a good location for that, continues to be well-received. We try to change it up a little bit every year, and most of the feedback this year, positive. Our pool, I love this picture of our pool. The first time I saw it, I didn't think it was ours, but we've had a good year there to date, and we still have a few dates before we close down at Labor Day. We've done twenty-nine pool parties, and our swim lesson number this year was one hundred and thirteen, so we instructed one hundred and thirteen kids techniques to learn to swim. So, a good season there. We, this year, changed our pass system. In the past, we've offered an individual pass, a family pass, and then our courtesy passes, which you've authorized some free pass for those that qualify. This year, we instituted a twenty-punch pass and a fifty-punch pass. So, we sold some. We've heard lots of people say, "Hey, I'm gonna do that next year because it makes sense." So, we think that's a step in the right direction. So, our passes, we've done well with, fifty-five family and nine individual passes, and then the punch passes. People that have walked up to our gate and paid two dollars this year, we've had six-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-one of them at the municipal pool and four-hundred-and-fifty at Prairie Trails. And that four-fifty is an increase at Prairie Trails, sixty-six ninety-one. From what I can tell, and I'll be honest, our record-keeping prior to this year about actual people getting to the pool has been a little bit iffy, so I think we're ahead of schedule there, too. So, our pass users have used their passes in our special events this year. Our Twilight Swims, you've heard us talk about those. We do four of those a year. Usually, we have total attendance at those, four events, five or six hundred. We made it over a thousand this year. They were very well-received. We had good weather on those Friday nights and had big crowds, so... To date, we are ahead of last year in terms of total attendance. We're at about twelve-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty that have come through the pool gates this year, passes and individual and special events. And last year, when we ended, we were at about twelve-thousand-five-hundred. So, we're up about three hundred, and we still have a few weekend dates to go. Our cemeteries this year, through the end of July, we've had sixty-six burials at our three cemeteries, and we've sold thirty-six spaces. That's down from last year, and I guess I'll call that a good thing, that we don't have as much business out there, so... And then, our forestry department, when I visited with Sue, I said, "How many trees have we planted this year?" And she said, "Oh, thirty or forty." And I said, "Okay." "How many flowers?" She goes, "I can't count that high." Thousands of flowers that make up the baskets and the planter boxes that you see downtown. They get out and do the Arbor Day tree planting. They spend some time with some classes at the schools, as you can see with that picture, and they pull a ton of weeds and do a ton of watering. So, those two or three people really get a lot done to beautify the city, as I'm sure you've heard. So, in a nutshell, we've had a good year. We're excited about where we're headed. We're excited about the master plan, ready to see where that takes us. Our staff, as I mentioned, does a lot of hard work, a lot of it behind the scenes that people don't realize needs to happen for events to go on on a Saturday or on a weekday night. They all want to do a good job. They're all committed to doing a good job. We're a great starting point for people to get their first opportunities at real work. We've had several that have gone on to do great things. We have several that have come back and said, "Thank you for an opportunity to learn how to do things the right way, to set a good example." Our management staff takes a lot of time to train these kids. And, you know, we don't bat a thousand on making good selections, but we get about ninety-nine percent. It's, we have a lot of good people that work for us, and I couldn't be happier to be in charge of them, so... Happy to answer any questions you might have. Appreciate the opportunity.
Any questions for Kevin?
I had a question this weekend. This lady called me and wanted to know how the senior citizens of the city is going to work together. Are we going to take it over, or are we going to let them have their board and...
Well, we're still going to work through that. The director's been on vacation. She's back today. She and I are going to have a little meeting tomorrow, and then we're going to have a meeting with her, myself, the director, and the president of the board to start that process, to see where that takes us. So, the timing is such of your approval of the budget and her vacation have kind of slowed us in getting started, but we'll get rolling on that very quickly.
There was an article that was in the paper that brought up some concerns, and that's why I got a phone call this weekend.
And I guess, I think that we don't have any preconceived notions, and if we had one, that their board is going to be intact. And so, from my perspective, they're driving this car, and we're going to react to it. You know, it's not something that we went after. It's only about enhancing what they have, and so, we'll react to what they want to do. I guess I'd be surprised if they came and asked us to get rid of that board. But we're going to listen. We're not, we don't have any preconceived notions of what this is going to look like.
Thank you. Thanks. Good question. Anything else, Kevin?
What I failed to add, and give me just one more minute, our park staff and our mowing crew, they do about a hundred and fifty to two-hundred acres a week of mowing. And that doesn't include the airport and some of our road sides. We're losing a lot of summer staff. Some of them are headed back to school. So, we're going to keep mowing as long as the grass keeps growing, but we'll ask for a little bit of understanding that we may not be as quick to get to some things as we have been all summer. So, those guys and gals do a lot of dirty work when it's a hundred and five degrees and they're out on a whipper or mower all day, but that's a lot of mowing, and they complain a little, but not a lot, and they get a lot done, so...
It is a lot. We've had nice rains. The mowing's going into September, even on my own yard, so thanks for that comment. I think that's well said. And thanks to the rec department for everything you've done. I think those numbers are impressive in terms of participation, so, and keeping track of those. The numbers at the pool were a surprise to me in terms of total numbers, so, thank you.
Good.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Kevin.
Mayor, I may just add, if you don't care, the commission has had discussions about how to save money. Rec is an expense, and so, there's been discussion about reducing our summer staff. And so far, the commission has always said that training our children are part of what they see as one of our roles, and so, have not chose to do that. But in case you ever wonder, well, we could get rid of concession stands. We could. We could get rid of people running a scoreboard at a game. We could. Just, the commission has never chose to do that, but we have examined it because it's money, and you could cut it if you chose. Or, the swimming pool is an expense. It's an eighty-thousand-dollar probably a year expense above revenues. And so, teaching kids how to swim has been important to the commission, and so, those discussions, I don't know if you've had them yet, but it is something that commissions will ask about when they see the expenses and if they examine a budget. And so, I just thought this was a good opportunity to point out that it has been something to discuss, and what we're doing is deliberate.
Okay, thank you. Next, I have for personal appearance, Kirk Bookout.
For my entire career at the City of El Dorado, so about twenty-five years, I've been involved in two professional organizations, AWWA, which is American Water Works Association. That's the professional organization associated with drinking water, and KWAA, which is Kansas Water Environment Association, which is wastewater. It wasn't until I became president of KWAA that I began to be more aware of a national organization that represents both of these groups. The National Association of Clean Water Agencies, the acronym is NACWA. They're a nationally recognized leader in environmental policy, and they're involved in all facets of water quality protection. They're viewed nationally as a key stakeholder in both legislative and regulatory arenas, and help give municipalities a voice in Congress and EPA. The El Dorado Wetlands and Water Reclamation Facility recently received NACWA's Platinum Peak Performance Award. These peak performance awards are awarded to facilities with a hundred percent compliance in a calendar year, and the Platinum Award pays special tribute to facilities with five consecutive years of a hundred percent compliance. The City of Lawrence and Johnson County are the only other facilities in Kansas to receive this award. The Wetlands and Water Reclamation Facility have had a longstanding tradition of great compliance since it started, was built in two thousand and seven. These efforts have yielded many other accolades from industry organizations. The first one was APWA Environmental Project of the Year, both state and national. And then, the Kansas Water Environment Association, each year selects a Plan of the Year. We had that in two thousand and nine and ten, in two thousand and twelve and thirteen, and then again in fifteen. And the years that we didn't get it, two thousand and eleven and two thousand and fourteen, you're only eligible to win it two years in a row, and then you have to sit out a year so somebody else can win. So, we're very proud of those awards. These awards are a testament to our staff and our operations, and they take great pride in what they do. And so, Jason is here. Jason's the superintendent of wastewater. He's actually the one responsible for the award, and so, this is the NACWA award that we received.
Good job, John. Thank you. Thank you, Jason and Kirk, for your efforts. Congratulations. Congratulations to you and the city as a whole.
One other thing to mention that's water-related. We're going to be switching over, it's that time of year, we're switching over to free chlorine. We were hoping that we wouldn't have to this year. It's pretty much an annual thing anymore. Water temperatures from El Dorado Lake are up around, got as high as eighty-four, eighty-five degrees. With the cool-off, they're down to about eighty-two or eighty-three degrees right now, but it's really tough to keep combined chlorine residual in the water when the water temperature gets that warm. We'll be starting that. Residents will probably notice, if they notice anything, they'll notice a change in a couple of days. We'll stay on this for probably three weeks. Again, this is a normal annual thing that all cities have to go through, and it helps disinfect and clean out our system. So, free chlorine in the next three weeks.
Thank you again. Next, I have Jennifer Cook going to give us an update on the Drums Across Kansas. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here this evening to give you guys an update on our Drums Across Kansas event. We've been getting all the numbers back in over the past few days. Let me get this back in record. We had not hosted an event of this size in El Dorado or at BG Stadium, so I think we were all excited to see how things would go for us. I think that we can all say it was pretty successful, and the numbers that we've had coming in from our ticket system proved to us that we had pretty great attendance. Total tickets we had sold was one-thousand-six-hundred-and-eleven. Our total attendance, including sponsors, City of El Dorado employees and volunteers, was another one-hundred-and-forty-three. And then, when you add in the drum corps team and staff, add another one-thousand-fifty, we came out with two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-four total attendance at BG that evening. We wanted to see ticket sales at about fifteen-hundred to two-thousand, so I think we came in and met that goal pretty well. In the ticket system that we use with the college, it's able to break down who bought tickets, all the way down to if it was in Benton, Tuanda, El Dorado. So, when we looked at those numbers, El Dorado, Wichita demographic area made up for thirty-five percent of the ticket sales. At Gate and Day, the ticket sales made up for thirty-eight percent, and the remaining twenty-seven percent of ticket sales were outside of the El Dorado, Wichita demographic. And we saw twelve states represented by ticket sales. So, we had people coming in from Missouri, South Carolina, North Dakota, South Dakota, New Mexico, Oklahoma, Nebraska, Wyoming, Illinois, Michigan, and Maryland. So, I thought that was pretty exciting to see people traveling. When we went around and asked people why they traveled so far, it was often because they were following their daughter or grandson that were performing in the drum corps. So, they seemed to have a pretty loyal following for this event. The expenses are broke down here for what it took for us to host the event. The contract was the largest expense that we saw, as well as just, we had to do the media program, which we worked with the paper on, advertising. We added everything in expenses down to extension cords that we had to purchase. So, when you look at that number, it's kind of scary, and it seems like it was a pricey event to put on. But in terms of the sponsorship money that we earned from local individuals and businesses here in El Dorado, that pretty much covered the contract itself. We split the ticket sales between the City of El Dorado and the entity that helped us put it on with Drums Corps International. So, we split those ticket sales and also the suite owner tickets. And then, we split the cost to put the meal on upstairs with them. So, some of the expenses were also split. I also included in there, and this money stayed within rec, but they ran the concessions that evening, and they brought in a little over four thousand that night. So, they were able to bring in a little bit of income that evening as well. Our total profit that the Convention and Visitors Bureau saw was eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy dollars, and then the rec department was able to bring in a little over four thousand. We had a lot of really good feedback from the public. Here were a few of the comments that we saw, either in Facebook, email, we've had phone calls. A lot of people said it was a really exciting show. It was something different that they didn't expect. It was great for all ages. We heard a lot that it was a great event for our stadium and that they really enjoyed seeing that sort of event at the stadium. We had a really wonderful outpouring of comments about our volunteers, which Martin at the high school did a lot of that. He gathered the majority of our volunteers, so it was a lot of our local high school kids, a ton of great feedback about them, so was very grateful to have them helping us. A lot of people said our stadium was nicer than Sesna Stadium, so that was a nice comment, which is where the event was typically held. The Jumbotron, we heard good feedback on that. And the suite tickets was the first for this event that had been offered. So, us having the suite tickets up there with air conditioning and a meal provided was the first that that had been offered, and people that had attended the event in the past said they really liked that addition. I got up the next morning and gave rides to some of the judges to the airport, and they had nothing but good things to say about the facility as well. Again, our volunteers were commented on. One of the judges said that he had the best night's sleep at Days End that he had ever had while on the road, so I thought that was exciting. They really enjoyed the judges' area up on the third floor. Again, comment about how nice our stadium was. We also accommodated last minute an extra drum corps team at the high school after Rose Hill, I believe, wanted to charge them a very large amount to stay there, and Sue Givens was able to make it happen so they could be accommodated here. And so, they really enjoyed staying in El Dorado and our facility, so... So, I don't think I heard any negative comments about the event from people attending or Of course, I have to thank the city staff. I think every single department here within the city helped me in some way or another. I know that the front desk girls were answering a ton of phone calls. We were like a ticketing system there for a while because we were helping people make purchases through the website. I had guys delivering water, tons of ice. We gave away, between our water and other water, over 1,000 bottles to the drum corps kids as they came off the field. I had Brad Myers crew out there cleaning all week prior, before, during, after. There was a lot of cleaning to do. Mowing was done. The rec department ran the concessions. And then we had multiple employees volunteer for the event as well. So, it was definitely a collaboration between all city departments to put on this event, as well as the college helping out in USD 490. So, the manpower and resources from our fellow departments definitely make my job much easier. And then also thanking the sponsors here in El Dorado that donated money. We had many local businesses donate money, as well as some out-of-town Wichita businesses that donated money. And here's a list of all of our sponsors that we had this year. I know that a lot of businesses weren't sure if they were going to donate to this because it hadn't been done here in El Dorado and they weren't sure what to expect, but seeing their logos up on the Jumbotron throughout the whole event, they were really excited that they did volunteer or did sponsor. And I've heard businesses say they'd like to be a part of it next year. So, I think that it went over well and people had a good time. They have already said that they would like to sign a contract to come back next year. So, I would like to have them back next year.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions? Good job, Jim.
Thank you.
Yeah, for those, for those who weren't able to go and knowing that it's coming back next year, we anticipate that it's going to be a return. I would encourage everybody to go. It's a great time and the stadium holds a lot more than 2,000. So, there's a lot of comfortable seats left at that. So, yeah, it was, it's a great event. It's a great activity. Very impressive what those guys do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Thank you. We're through personal appearances. Public comments. Anybody from the audience wish to address the commissioner? Time for public comment. Please state your name and address.
Evening. Matt Guthrie, 811 West Central. I'm not here to complain about anything. I'm here to actually say thank you to the El Dorado Police Department. Last Thursday night, my 88-year-old father-in-law went missing, well, about 4:30 or so. About 6:30, I got a phone call from my frantic 85-year-old mother-in-law telling me that Charlie went missing. We, I went around town, went to all the restaurants. He was just going to get some sandwiches apparently, and he got turned around. He's a new resident here in El Dorado. They live up over off a country club and he just got turned around for two and a half hours. After about 30 minutes of driving around town, my wife did call down to the police department and said, you know, please look for him, please see what you could do. I happened to spot him heading north on Main Street about 7 o'clock. Called my wife, said I spotted him. He's heading north, he's going to turn on 12th. Nope, he didn't turn on 12th. Kept going, he's going to turn on post. Nope, nope, didn't turn on post. Went all the way past Middle School Highway. We went 15 miles up north before he kind of snapped out of it and started, decided to pull over. Going 85 miles an hour, by the way. In the meantime, the El Dorado Police Department Officer Harris, I believe, was right behind us, trying to get up to us so he could stop him, get the lights on and stop him. And that doesn't happen anywhere else. I've never experienced that. And I actually came here just to tell Chief Zeeman thank you and appreciate it, but he's not here this evening, so I just want to let you guys know that. Thank you. Please pass on to Chief for me and let him know that we've got excellent police department. It's not the first time that I've had a unique situation with the police department. We have another officer from England.
You do?
Well, I can't remember his name.
Sanders.
Sanders. I live right on Central. And one Sunday evening, we were outside having some drinks, just kind of, you know, enjoying Central. He pulled over a semi heading west and had him stopped and saw another one heading east and actually jumped out in the middle of traffic and stopped that, stopped that other semi going the other direction. Not an assist from another officer at all and processed both of those cars. Posted both those semis at the same. Got one going and took care of the other one. I was ready to throw my hat in the street for the hat trick for that third one. But I just want to, just want to say that we've got an excellent police department and the officers are great. And I just want to say thank you and please pass on to him. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Thank you for that. Glad the story turned out good for you. All right, thank you so much. Anybody else wishing to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Everybody's had a chance to see the minutes in the consent agenda from Synapse you asked last week. Any comments? And that's also the appropriation of any questions or comments associated with the consent agenda.
I move the consent agenda as presented, be approved.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? In favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Now, we have a bond sale that we had some success with today, I guess. Is that correct? Move on to that.
Thank you, Mayor. Tom Calico with Springsteen Incorporated. We're the city's financial advisor. Before I go into the bond sale, I want to first introduce Dane Lee with our firm. Dane's been with us about a year, is going to be helping me and working with El Dorado in the future. And I also want to say right at the outset that it's a very positive result. We had a great sale. And I really want to stress that we could not, would not be possible without the excellent work of your finance staff and your city administration. As you'll see as I get into the presentation, without their hard work, we wouldn't get nearly the receptivity that we get in the market each time we go out for a sale of bonds. Okay, so we sold general obligation bonds today, your Series 2016A. That was originally in the amount of 8,780,000. You might recall when I was back here in July talking about the sale. We did get a premium bid on the bonds, which is basically a marketing technique that purchasers of bonds like to use. And as a result of that, we were able to reduce the borrowing to 8,515,000. So, you might make sure in any motions that you make this evening that you reference that amount rather than the original. The bonds financed several things. There was some financing of projects, which I understand were financed internally originally and so you're basically refunding, you're reimbursing yourself for these. Those were improvements to the existing library. There were some water and sewer improvements and some road projects as well. And the other part of the financing was a refunding of one of your KDHE revolving loans, I believe for wastewater. And that was about, that was the bulk of the bond issue. That was about 6.6 million out of the total bond issue. So, that's, that's the majority of it. We took bids today at, on the bonds, the way we typically sell bonds pretty well. Five just really wants to get right in my face. The way we typically sell bonds pretty well, we take bids, lowest interest rate wins. We took bids at 10:00 AM. You got nine bids, which is excellent. It's more than you've gotten of the last few issues. Those nine bids represent 37 banks because you've got some of them that go together in syndicates. So, 37 banks total, nine bids, which I think is really excellent interest. The winner was Country Club Bank at a true interest cost of 1.44%. On the refunding portion, what that means is you're going to see a present value savings of a little over $386,000. That, just a cash flow standpoint, comes out to a little over $31,000 a year in savings to your utility. So, should come in quite healthy. We've reviewed the bids. We think they were aggressive bids based on the number of bids received, as well as comparable transactions in the marketplace and market indices. We received a rating on the bonds. We saw a rating from Standard and Poor's. They affirmed the existing AA minus rating on the city's general obligation debt and assigned that rating to this bond issue. They noted a number of strengths of the city in their rating report. Good financial policies and practices, good financial management, strong budgetary performance, strong budgetary flexibility and liquidity. So...
Keep going.
Still an excellent, still an excellent report from Standard and Poor's. With that, we would recommend the awarding of the 2016A general obligation bonds to Country Club Bank. And again, want to acknowledge the excellent work of your staff in making all this possible. Any questions?
Any questions for the question? Did you have any local banks participate in the bidding?
Yes and no. Let's see. UMB was a bidder. Commerce was a bidder. Central State's capital, which does quite a bit in Wichita area. But there's the one, I'm looking here, maybe I'm missing, was there any one in particular?
No, I'm just curious if you had local participation?
Yeah, we did. We had, we had some. And in Country Club, I kind of consider somewhat local, regional. But, yeah, I think of the ones that have, of the banks that have a presence. See, that'd be UMB. Commerce, Commerce have a presence here?
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Yes, Commerce has a presence. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd entertain motion. Ordnance number?
G 1222.
1222.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number G 1222, an ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance of general obligation improvement bond series 2016A in the City of El Dorado, Kansas, providing for the levying collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on set bonds as they become to authorizing certain other documents and actions and connections therewith, making certain covenants with respect thereto.
Second it. Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have rule call.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badge?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Motion number two?
Resolution number 2825. And then you'll fill in ordinance number G 1222.
Okay. Any other questions for motion two? Just to take out the discussion? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution number 2825. A resolution prescribing the form and details of and authorizing and directing the sale and delivery of general obligation improvement bond series 2016A in the City of El Dorado, Kansas, previously authorized by ordinance number G 1222 of the issuer, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Tabitha, is this a rule call?
No, the resolution just requires a...
Thank you. All right. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Okay, thank you very much for your work. Next item on our agenda would be the application for a special use permit to allow accessory apartment at 3215 West Tuwanda Avenue, case number 16002 SUP from the planning commission.
Yes, Mayor. The applicant are the owners of the property at 3215 West Tuwanda, requesting allowing a second apartment accessory structure to be placed on the parcel of land they own. The planning commission held a public hearing on July 28th to review this subject and vote, and had a vote of 6-1 to recommend a special use permit.
As I look at this, is this a stream that runs through?
That is a creek that goes to the pond just directly south of the residence along the college.
So, it's no problem?
They're going to have to, they're going to have to figure out a way to cross that that meets potential requirements or permits through the state or whoever may be involved in that.
Okay, so there'll be some sort of a bridge or something?
There'll have to be something. Yeah, right now, we're just talking about the possibility. And that shaded area isn't necessarily the exact space or the size that that structure would have.
Yeah, because that's bigger than all these houses up there.
Right. That would just represent an area that could be potentially placed.
Okay, so it's at the very south end of the two acres?
Correct.
Can you talk about these, the city zoning regs and the policy associated with multiple dwellings on one lot?
Yeah, it's, it's actually pretty uncommon to have those, at least new ones come up. A lot of the lot sizes in town really wouldn't allow such use to meet setbacks and to meet distances away from the primary residents that are required today. This lot is two acres, however, and feels like, we feel like it meets with the future land use, the density in the area, doesn't overwhelm the existing lot by adding this structure.
It's permitted to have multiple residents on one lot?
With a special use permit.
With a special use permit. What about utilities? How is that handled? Have it own separate utilities?
That's up to them. I mean, it needs to stay a contiguous parcel of land. These couldn't be split out without, you know, giving some sort of property away to give access to public right of way. That would be a whole nother administrative, administrative process to do a lot split and get it separated.
Would this allow non-relatives living in it? Doesn't R1 require everyone be related? Or is that just in a structure?
Just in the municipal code, more or less.
So, what's the answer to that? Yes or no? Wouldn't?
I mean, you're allowed to have an accessory apartment and rent that out, you know, above garage or if you have the room, put another structure. As long as the special use permits grant. Now, if you just have regular R1 zoning with no special use, you can't build a separate apartment in your backyard and start renting it out without approval of you all.
But I understand from the planning commission's minutes, they've not decided on the size or any of that of the house. They're just waiting to get permission, permission before...
Yeah, we were told, and I think the applicants are here. If you have direct questions to them, we were told anywhere from 12 to 18 hundred square
Could you come up?
Name and address, please.
Dave Frenchall, Yale, 3337 South East Bay. We own this property along the street.
And our daughter and her husband live there. And we're just wanting access to build us a small home on the back part of it. We're going to sell our home and move into town.
Downsizing.
Downsizing a lot. We haven't got...
That's nice looking.
Yeah, it's very cute. And I just picked something off of interest. We don't know yet. We didn't know what the process would be to allow it, so it'll be small, probably 1,000 square foot, not 1,800.
1,000 to 12,000.
That's not downsizing.
That is not downsizing.
Between 1,000 and 12,000 square feet, what we're looking at?
Two bedrooms, a bath, something small, so we can travel.
Okay. I guess the house also, as I look at this, is there any, as we talk about some of the zoning regs and building code requirements for driveways and those kind of things, that's, that's, this is a land use thing, but all that still certainly applies out here.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for the Crenshaw's?
Yeah.
All right.
What's the ordinance number?
There isn't one.
Oh, there isn't?
Yes.
You sure?
Okay. Hold on just a second. Oh, I'm sorry. I missed it. Yes, I filled it in already.
No, you're fine.
G twelve twenty-three.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the recommendation of the planning commission to approve case number sixteen dash zero zero two dash SUP, requesting a special use permit to allow an accessory apartment in an R1 low-density residential district, and that ordinance number G twelve twenty-three be approved.
Second it.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Okay. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
You gotta give a roll call.
If it's an ordinance...
It's, and it's this roll call, so I'm not asking you that.
Okay. Then let's move to roll call.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badde?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
And Mayor Haynes?
Yes. All right, thank you.
Have fun.
We're just beginning.
Yeah, now the works go.
Agenda item number five is application to rezone two sixteen South Vine Street from C one Central Business District to I one Light Industrial, case number sixteen zero zero five REZ. At this time, I need to proclaim that this is a client of mine, so I will step aside from this discussion, and Vice Mayor Chase will take it from here.
Do you have a breakdown, Scott?
Sure. Butler REC is requesting a zone change from C one General Business District to I one Light Industrial. They're currently working on an expansion project, and this will clean up some zoning that we have in the area. The east half of their property they currently own is zoned I one, and the west half is zoned C one. We feel it more appropriate to zone at I one to meet their intended use. The planning commission held a public hearing on this, July twenty-eighth, and voted six zero to recommend approval of the rezon.
Did they have anyone come that was concerned or showed any concern?
No.
Now, this is going to show my age, but that green building that used to be the El Dorado Dairy, are they going to tear that down?
I'm not sure if I know what the Dairy Building was. There's a, there's a small building.
That's, that's it.
That's it. It's gone. I think it's gone.
It's gone already?
Yeah.
Oh, never mind. I know what's gonna happen to it.
Well, if it's, I mean, consistent with the plan, and we had a unanimous recommendation, I would entertain a motion. Unless anyone has any other questions?
You got an orders number?
Twelve, G twelve twenty-four.
You sure?
Yes, I'm sure.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the recommendation of the planning commission to approve case number sixteen dash zero zero five REZ, requesting a zoning at two sixteen South Vine Street to I one Light Industrial District, that the ordinance number C twelve twenty-four be approved.
Second. All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
And a roll call.
This is a roll call, too?
Yeah.
Roll calls.
Um, this, Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badde?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Locke?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, thank you. We'll move on to item number six, public hearing for project number four seventy-three. This is for the paving project at Walnut River Brewery. At this point, we would open a, are there any comments that staff would like to make on this?
I think that, as you all know, Walnut River Brewery asked us to pave the alley behind their business. They have a lot of demand on it, bringing materials in and out of their business. The project is complete. They asked for it, so now we're gonna spread the specials.
Okay. With that, next thing would be to hold, hold a public hearing to consider the levy assessments. This time, we'll open up for a public hearing for project number four seventy-three, special assessments for the project at Walnut River Brewery. Anybody wishing to address the commission for public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close public hearing and move on. Any questions or thoughts from the commission just for this? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion.
G twelve twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve orders number G twelve twenty-five, an ordinance levying special assessments on certain property to pay the cost of internal improvements to the city of El Dorado, as herefore authorized by resolution number twenty-eight oh one, the city have provided for collection of special assessments.
Second.
Special assessments, sorry.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Badde?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on our agenda would be 2017 CDBG housing program, something we spoke about in our work session a couple of weeks ago, and we even talked a little bit about in city commission at our August first meeting. So today is, I think, a little more information and a public hearing on the topic. So is there anybody from staff who wish to make comment to this?
Yes, Mayor, as we've been working on this, trying to define the scope and the size and what type of project we're looking at, we went ahead and published the notice of the public hearing and looked at a boundary area, south of Sixth Avenue, west of Gordy Street, east of High Street, and north of the southwest trafficway. We were estimating the project cost to be three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Of that, the city's share will be seventy-five thousand. Then we look to reinvest with infrastructure, road improvements, and water line upgrades in those neighborhoods. We did, we did held a, held a public informational meeting, August fourth, that was attended by a number of residents. We let them know about the potential project, helped them with any questions they had on a pre-application. We targeted this area with pre-application letters and notices, because it really drove to try to define the area and the need of what we were looking to accomplish. I do have a map of the respondents we had in the certain areas. If you'll bear with me, I'll load it up here and ask Linda from El Dorado anything you want, and if you have any questions of her as well. And Casey Tillman with SCAD is here.
Thank you.
I think the map is depicting the pre-applications that we've received.
Correct.
And are they designated as landlord versus?
They are. What you see on this map right now, the red, the red line is the boundary as identified in the public hearing notice. The yellow parcels are landlord properties. The blue parcels are owner occupied, and these are pre-applications we received in our office.
The pre-application deadline is till August twenty-second. We are still getting, I'm still getting inquiries, and I think this city is too. It's, since this isn't something we've done routinely, I think that people don't realize what it's really all about. And, you know, just briefly, we have the opportunity to apply for grant funds. Our public hearing notice indicates we would be working on approximately six owner occupied units and five landlord units with the funds we have. I think it'll come to that, and four demos.
Four demos.
I think we've had a number of people express interest in demos where we think, and the demos do not have to be within the target area, if I understand correctly. So we've seen the interest there. Pre-application wise, I still think there's a lot of homeowners that could benefit from the project, so they still have time to fill out the application. It's available online, or they call our offices, and we'll be happy to help them.
Till August twenty-second?
August twenty-second.
Yes. Looking to get all those.
But it has to be in that area right there that you've got to define. Those two that are outside those two homes, can it move over to Allegheny and include those homes?
You all can decide if you want to change those boundaries or further define those boundaries. We did fill, when we put the public hearing notice out, this where we thought we could have the potential biggest impact, we had the population that met the low to moderate income guidelines, and the housing conditions that we thought could use some more.
Looks like you've got plenty inside the lines.
We did, and we, and we got, and if you see the whole city, we got them from the entire city.
Oh, okay.
And really, what's great about having those pre-applications, if we decide, if you all decide is to apply again in future years, we have that application on file. We can just give them a call and say, are you still interested?
We also have the ability to change the target area next time for the next round of that. The question I, yes, I have is, and maybe I didn't hear you correctly, you said the target is for six homeowners and five landlord, but you've got over fifty app, fifty people interested. What's gonna be the process to identify the, those eleven versus the fifty plus that have shown interest?
If we receive approval, we're required to put together a housing plan, which will come back and talk about criteria. There's several different ways you can do that. It takes into consideration first come, first served and need. You can create it that way, and so...
And, yeah, part of the, the housing risk assessor that we look to hire as part of this grant application would, would walk into the structure and see if it met, if it really had that need, or if it was worth investing the dollars into.
Okay. So those criteria, those criteria yet to be set. You kind of need this process to go through so we can set that criteria. Right now, we've got fifty, fifty plus individuals that represent it, or properties, not necessarily individuals or properties.
That was fifty last Tuesday when the agenda had to be out.
Yep.
So we're, we're over seventy-five now.
That expressed an interest in, in learning more, not necessarily an applicant. Is that correct?
Pre-applications.
No, filed a pre-app.
They filed a pre-app.
Filed a pre-app.
Oh, okay, that was a letter of interest, but it's a pre-app.
It's a pre-app, and then later, we're coming out. So if we get the grant, then you'll get application. One of the other things, too, that may impact where you do stuff, is where we're doing stuff. And so, right now, with engineering and actually all of our departments are looking at need in neighborhood, one of the things that this grant hopes to achieve is a change in a, in a neighborhood. And so, if our street need and water need is in one area that has applications, that may impact it as well. But the, so you're looking at a big picture. That's a bigger area than we probably will want to describe, because if you spread it out, you won't be able to demonstrate to the grantor that you're really impacting the neighborhood.
Right. You're looking for a concentrated area.
Right.
And that brings my question of the city's contribution, which is infrastructure. That stuff was, is, the infrastructure upgrades, we're in our CIP to begin with, this is not a new expense, it's an anticipated expense in the future, anyway?
Well, the, certainly the streets are. The streets, and it's funded not out of general fund. Streets would be your sales tax revenue. Water lines are, of course, the water utility. The, in part of this area, we have, we've been working to reduce the number of red hydrants all over the city. They negatively impact fire flows, and so we're gonna look for those. And the other thing that we actively do is eliminate small lines so people have plenty of water to their house. A long time ago, people would put in a two-inch line and feed a whole block, and so we just eliminate those when we can. So we're gonna, we're examining that, the town for those as well, and to see where we can parlay those, that work as our match for the grant.
Okay.
I might add just one thing as an example, and that is, they did talk to us a lot about impact and impacting the area more with just housing. I think a good example of something during this process is one of the landlords that called me said, what's happening at Second and Star? I have a house adjacent. I had considered putting money into it, and I was hesitant, but now I think I will paint and do some things. So, you know, we're hoping that when you combine a lot of different things in a neighborhood for improvements, that it encourages even more people to do things.
Okay. That'd be the goal.
I agree. And I guess I'd suggest that this will be the, this type of application is what we've perceived doing for a while because of the housing needs in the community. So this will become an annual event for the commission, and so those areas are gonna change as well.
Does, does the response of pre-application lead to the strength of the application as a whole to CDBG? Do you have a feel for that?
He says yes.
We think yes.
He says yes.
And he's saying yes, yes. I mean, it's, we said it's competitive, and when we show that we have pre-applications in the targeted area, and that we are already in dialogue with people, it shows that there's a good chance that the funds will go out quickly and be utilized and...
I get that it's not a shoo-in, but certainly one, wanted to be known that we, with those folks that show an interest, that helps the whole process.
And then I think also, we need to remember that there's other sources of funds, and as we continue to look at those, we found out or realized today, our next application deadline is October fourteenth for another program, so...
So if you have an interest in improving the residents, I'd say, yeah, give Linda or Scott a call. There are several programs, weatherization and MIH, there's several programs out there.
And file a pre-application now.
Yeah.
An INRP.
Important to do that.
An INRP.
An INRP.
Always there.
Oh, that's great. MIH and this don't really go hand in hand, but can certainly still be in the target area.
Good. Could think of something inventive.
Okay. Any other questions for Linda and Scott on the commission? Comments?
Wonderful opportunity. Thanks for all your work. Well, at this time, we need to hold a public hearing to consider the resolution to proceed with the CDBG housing program. At this point, I will open up...
At this point, I will open up the floor for public, public hearing, anybody wishing to speak to the commission on this behalf. Seeing none, I'll close public hearing, and we'll move on with the, with the motion. I entertain a motion.
Resolution number?
Twenty-eight, twenty-six.
Twenty-eight, twenty-six?
Uh-huh, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Resolution Number Twenty-eight, twenty-six, a resolution certifying legal authority to apply for the 2017 Kansas Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program for the Kansas Department of Commerce, and authorizing the mayor to sign and submit such an application. Second.
Okay, so it's been moved in second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Motion two is for the staff to, to enter into an agreement for project administration with SCED, is that correct? Do we have any, pardon me?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was gonna speak a little bit.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mayor, we sent out as part of this project RFQs to eleven potential grant administrators and seven potential housing inspectors slash risk assessors. Each are required, if awarded the grant, to have an administrator and a risk assessor. We received one request back from SCED for the administration portion of the project, and two back on the risk assessor portion of the project. Staff reviewed the information provided as required for the RFQ, and was recommending that you allow the city manager to negotiate a contract with SCED for services.
Okay. Is the funding for this count towards the city's participation in the program?
Can or cannot, and not a...
I think we're counting on a small portion of it, correct, to be counted as part of our match.
Okay, thanks. Any questions from the commission? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve staff's recommendation of negotiating a contract for project administration and housing inspectors, risk assessors for the CDVG Housing Grant with the S-C-K-E-D-D.
Second.
Greg, you're gonna have to...
You can't get in, Greg.
You can't get in there.
Okay, it's been moved in second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. We have, next on our agenda is executive session. I guess it's in the middle of our meeting, I guess I would ask, is anybody here in the audience that would wish to, is here because of item nine or ten, which is paving of locusts and sales tax resourcing? Seeing none, well, go ahead, and if so, I would move it ahead.
I am.
You are? Well, you get to be here for the meeting, I'd say. All right, so with that, we'll stay on, stay on topic with the agenda without moving around. This time, we need an executive session for the purpose of discussing non-elected personnel, and also, the purpose of discussing business proprietary information. Those two topics are in our executive session. It's now 7:45. Can we start with a half hour?
I think so, Mayor, and then, and then if, if we want to come back and go back at the end, or get, we may do one at the end as well.
Okay. All right.
So everybody doesn't have to wait.
Okay, so I need a motion for executive session to reconvene at 8:15.
I move to reassess to an executive session for the purpose of discussing matters pertaining to non-elected personnel and proprietary business, and to reconvene the regularly scheduled meeting in the City Commission Room at 8:15 PM.
Second.
Which one wants it?
All of us have it.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved in second, go into executive session until 8:15. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We'll retire to executive session and reconvene at 8:15. Thank you.